Chair, the meeting is now being recorded. Okay, I'm going to call the regular meeting October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four to order. Um, please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Secretary, my name is Carl. Commissioner Benninger.
Here.
Commissioners Scamilla. Commissioner Leo.
Here.
Commissioner Pham. Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Vice Chair Ramos.
Here.
Chair Oliva.
Here.
Chair Quorum has been reached at five thirty two. Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to remind my public commissioners to turn microphones on when speaking, or off when not speaking. On when speaking, please place the microphone about four inches away from you. Thank you. Members of the public in the ten point commission meetings in person or virtually via Zoom. They now invite the Commission Secretary to describe the way the public can access and participate in this meeting. This meeting is not being live streamed via Apple or YouTube. It will be recorded and put up onto our website tomorrow. But if you would like to provide public comment or watch, you may do so. Join me soon. You may join the meeting here soon and turn the meeting ID number eight eight five zero five zero six seven four one three. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, select the hand icon to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the man who entered. You can also join the meeting by calling six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. Enter meeting ID number eight eight five zero five zero six seven four one three. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, press nine to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon with the last three digits of your phone number. After you're called upon, you may press six to unmute yourself. For those who are attending this meeting in person and would like to provide public comment, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into a secretary. All speakers will have three minutes to speak. I will alert you when your time's up. We have been known to favor non-agenda or non-public hearing items. Secretary does anyone wish to speak? If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into a secretary. If you are participating, we assume and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please select the hand icon and unmute yourself. If you are calling in and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please tell nine and then six to unmute yourself. Chair, we have two speakers. Thank you. I'm going to call the booth and we turn to approach the microphone and state your non-agenda.
Commissioners, staff, and Director Min Thai. I own and operate Adam's Iron Company at eight one one North Ponticetia Street in Santa Ana. I want to thank you, uh, Commissioners and, uh, and men for the train station meeting that we just had. I really felt that it was effective and a lot of people showed up. There were approximately thirty percent of our industrial owners at that meeting. Like myself and others are working on the remaining seventy percent of property owners and business owners to bring them up to speed as to the potential consequences of rezoning and removal of the existing overlay. There seems to be quite a disconnect as to the importance of our businesses respective to jobs, families, our investments, and a lifetime of work. I wonder, and I think about this a lot, have, have we all forgotten the importance of jobs and what they are and what they mean to families and their survival, their survival of families and their children growing up and things of that nature. At the train station moving under what comes next, you stated that the draft has been produced and is currently undergoing legal review. If, excuse me, if this is true, the people of the industrial SD eighty four zone receive a copy so that we may comment prior to your presentation to city council. I respectfully request that you give us the time to prepare a list of recommendations that can be incorporated in your presentation to council. And I'll close with cities need jobs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can you turn the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, the planning commission and staff. My name is Mike Targiff. I hope this will be a little bit of fun. Um, release the day of less muertos. Over happy Halloween coming up soon. I will stay on my feet for the proposed, for my comments on the proposed changes to the transit zoning code and the industrial moratorium current, currently in place. Both have much to do in a way with death. The death of hundreds of big San Antonio jobs. Many of those jobs are held by San Antonio residents, minorities, and immigrants. The death of property and business values and of retirement plans. The neighborhoods of Raisin and Logan are threatened with gentrification, rising rents, residents being forced out, and increased traffic. I drove through an area on my way here. Traffic was pretty bad. We are looking at the death of transparency as the city is not cooperating with releasing details of the plan and does not work in a collaborative manner with businesses and residents. The city has not performed any site-specific environmental testing or given site-specific environmental reports. Let's make it a real happy deal de los muertos and kill the industrial moratorium and the proposed changes to the transit zoning code. Thank you all.
Thank you. Meeting consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve item A, notes from all of these? We should go with Commissioner Wu to approve items A and B during the assembly. And there's a second for Commissioner Benninger. Secretary, please call for a little comment. Commissioner Benninger.
Aye.
Commissioners Scamilla. Commissioner Leo.
Aye.
Commissioner Pham.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos.
Aye.
Chair Oliva.
Aye.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioners Scamilla absent. What happens in consent calendar, events moving on to the public hearing. I will now read the process for the public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will be opened. Applicant will be given the opportunity to speak, limited to fifteen minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. Applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to comments made by the public, limited to three minutes. Then the public hearing will be closed. Discussion will return to the commission with the action taken to approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address strictly voluntary. State whether you support, oppose, or amitrate to the proposal. Your statement should include all pertinent facts within your language. Please note, decision on this meeting is pending, and is appealed within ten days by any interested party or individual. Recommendations on this item will be forwarded to the city council at a great profound determination. With this time, this is the timely place for tentative parcel map number twelve twenty four dash zero two and variance number twenty one four dash zero four. The property located at fifty two thirteen West Silver Drive, located within two family residences, R two zoning district. If any of you began doing, commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this kind of. Stay in line and you can carry on with your presentation.
Chair Commissioners, just really briefly, thank you. There was an administrative error with the resolutions that were published for this item. So we have corrected versions for distribution to you this evening as well as copies for the public to view as well. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Good evening, the planning commission. If you're welcome to me. To sum up this item, um, before you, Evan Dahl representing applicants and property owners is requesting approval of tentative parcel map number twenty twenty four dash zero two to subdivide an existing sixteen thousand eight hundred sixty eight square foot lot into two fee simple lots and variance number twenty twenty four dash zero four to allow a reduction in the required lot frontage for one of the new lots. Staff is recommending the adoption resolution approving this TPM and variance as conditioned. This is a site located within a general plan of the movie designation as low density residential LR seven. The site zoning classification is for R two zone and surrounding land use is include single and two family residences to the north and west, multifamily and commercial to the east, and single family and religious institution to the south. The building is located on a point thirty minute garage with two existing single family residences. In nineteen twenty three, the property was subdivided as part of the Silver Acres tract map number three six six. Site was then developed in nineteen fifty nine with two single family residences and has continued to be improved with accessory structures over the years. In two thousand fourteen, open plans were issued to the north one of the existing single family residences. And in two thousand fifteen, a new two-story single family residence with an attached two-car garage was constructed. So this is a site photo of the southern elevations depicting fifty two thirteen parcel one to the east and fifty two seventeen West Silver Drive parcel two to the west. This is the proposed tentative parcel map illustrating where the parcel will be subdivided. Applicant is proposing to subdivide existing two lot into two fee simple lot parcels. No new construction is being proposed. Existing single family residences are architecturally compatible with the surrounding residences in the neighborhood and comply with the applicable single family residence development standards and design guidelines with the exception of the minimum front lot frontage requirement of fifty feet for parcel two, which is fifty two fifteen of silver drive. As proposed, variance number twenty twenty four dash four is being requested by the applicant to allow a reduction in lot frontage by six feet, six inches. The proposal's condition is consistent with the various provisions of the city's zoning code and general plan including lot size setbacks, lot coverage, and parking. This variance has been requested to allow a reduction in lot frontage and further conditions of approval have been included to ensure that the site is brought into compliance with current residential standards. Finally, the tender of personal map was found to be consistent with the California Subdivision Map Act in chapter thirty four of the municipal code. In nineteen twenty three, the property was initially subdivided as part of the Silver Acres Track Map number three six six. After nineteen twenty three, the properties in the neighborhood were subdivided prior to the adoption of the subdivision map act in nineteen seventy four through a deeded process and were subdivided with less frontages and sizes than currently was required. The new lots are consistent with the size of the parcels in the surrounding area. Thus, the subdivision has been found to be consistent with the lot with development pattern of the mobile properties and does not break a pattern or establish a precedent in the surrounding area. Based on analysis and notice of exemption, environmental review number twenty twenty three dash ninety five will be filed for the project pursuant to section fifteen three oh one, class one for existing facilities. Staff recommends the adoption of a resolution approving tentative parcel map number twenty twenty four dash zero two and variance number twenty twenty four dash zero four as conditioned. Staff as well as the applicant representing the project, Evan Dahl, are willing to answer any outstanding questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the commission going to comment for questions for staff? Commissioner Benninger.
Uh, yes, we mentioned the setback on the fifty two thirteen, which was the original house built that was there. Uh, obviously, uh, when it was built, there wasn't any frontage requirements when it was built.
Yeah, there was a lot of frontage required, but they were looking at it as, um, a single parcel with two, um, single family residences.
Anybody not be trying to follow you, we told you to overlook their drinks, huh?
So after the nineteen seventy four, um, map act, uh, we required frontages. Um, and so in order to subdivide it, it needs to match all of those development standards, including that fifty-foot, uh, lot frontage.
Yeah, distance house to house around the side. Um, and I see your mention of, uh, any request for variance, does it meet code for the distance between homes?
It does, so everything else meets code, uh, including lot coverage, um, building height, et cetera. Um, then one is for the minimum lot frontage, and that's why we're requiring a variance.
I understand, thank you.
Commissioner Benninger.
Thank you, Chair. Once the lot split, are we rezoned? Well, is it being rezoned to be two R two lots or is it two R one lots?
So it'll still remain in R two zone.
Okay. So potentially those lots will then, um, as long as the spaces are allowed, be developed as R two lots individually.
So they'll remain as R two lots, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner.
I, I think the awkward, awkward question I have is, um, there's no plan at this point to put housing structure on one of the lot split, uh, that comprises six inches change.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Uh, I, I think the wording is that at this time, there is no housing plan.
Yes, that's correct. At this time, um, one of the lots is already, or part of the lot was already developed.
So the big house will remain intact, lose six inches of the frontage, right?
Yeah, it won't comply with a lot frontage, yes.
Then right next to it, to the wall to the next house, is where it's split, right? And that's empty with nothing, right?
So there's two existing, um, houses on it.
One is in the back, we can't see, right?
So this is difficult to see because we can't zoom in, but basically it's going to be, there's two existing houses.
Okay, to then enter those physical structures?
Yeah. Okay, sure. That seems good idea. Yeah, so, so that's the two-story one, and where's the other house?
Right next to it.
Oh, is, is that one story? That's correct. Uh, okay. Okay. So pretty much where the, uh, wall is existing is where they're proposing the lot, uh, to be subdivided. So fifty two thirteen, the one that is existing, uh, currently needs the variance.
Yeah, my main concern is that, um, Silver Acre has undergone a lot, a hodgepodge, different kind of thing. So, um, and, and I thank you for trying to make it consistent, uh, with all the different zoning and different, uh, plans and things like that, so, uh, and, um, true to your word, Ali, staff does go back and research all this stuff, so, thank you.
Commissioner.
Um, it's, it's a general question. So in this area, as Commissioner Wu mentioned, there is, there are some inconsistencies. Do we know how many other lots are like this in the area? And, and the reason I ask is, should we not try to get the men here to do that? Because these are individually owned homes, right? One family owns one, one owns the other, or is one person on both lots? Because what I'm trying to figure out is, if this is an area where we need to make consistent, where we can try to apply consistency in the area, instead of it being one, once in a while, once in a while, once in a while. That's all, that is more of a question for staff than it is we can do today. But if this area is as it is, and there are a bunch of R two lots with two homes on them, it should be subdivided, then should we figure out how to do it like generally, so you guys can get more consistency with the plan?
See, when surrounding area, there are a lot that were deeded to be already subdivided prior to nineteen seventy four. So it is consistent with that surrounding area that they've kind of, a lot of properties have already done this process. Um, so it is pretty consistent.
So with just a few more leaves like that in the area, not, not a lot, a lot less.
Right.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Ramos. No questions at this time, thank you. I don't have no questions for staff either. Um, the public hearing is now open, but applicant would just speak a little later. Okay. Um, does the, the public secretary, have received any written communication as a reminder of the public that we need to comment on this item? We have not received public comment prior to three thirty PM deadline. If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on this item, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into a secretary. If you are participating, we assume and would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon and unmute yourself. If you are calling and would like to comment on this item, please tell nine and then six to unmute yourself. I will wait for a few seconds. Chair, we do not have any speakers. Is it, is it motion, any questions? Commissioner Benninger.
Questions.
Commissioner Pham.
No questions.
Commissioner Wu.
No questions.
Commissioner Leo.
No questions.
Vice Chair Ramos.
No questions.
And I don't have a question, so the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve this matter?
I need to know.
We don't, we don't have a motion, we don't have a motion to approve this. A second. Commissioner Wu can second. I only have a second, but Commissioner, um, Secretary, please call for a little comment. Commissioner Benninger.
Aye.
Commissioner Scamilla. Commissioner Leo.
Aye.
Commissioner Pham.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos.
Aye.
Chair Oliva.
Aye.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Scamilla absent. This is a timely place for conditional use permit number twenty twenty four dash zero three and variance number twenty twenty four dash zero one for the property located in sixteen oh one and sixteen oh seven North Bristol Street, located within Bristol Street corridor specific plan, SP one zoning district. Before we begin, do you commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? Same way for you, I will provide a brief presentation. Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members of the planning commission. As you noted, after discussion tonight, we have conditional use permit number twenty twenty four dash zero three and variance number twenty twenty four dash zero one for Better Best Coffee Roasters drive-through window service at sixteen oh one and sixteen oh seven North Bristol Street. The applicant is proposing, uh, requesting approval of the conditional use permit twenty twenty four one zero three and variance number twenty twenty four one zero one to allow the construction of a sixteen hundred and twenty square foot cafe with a drive-through room at an outdoor patio and reduced ten foot setback. Uh, with that, staff is, um, recommending that we adopt a resolution approving C, the CEP and variance as conditioned. The general, the general plan designation is general commercial. The zone is SP one, Bristol Street corridor. The property is surrounded by a vacant property to the north, single family residential to the east, and eating establishment of McDonald's to the south and institutional, so the San Antonio College to the west. The lot size is eighteen thousand one hundred and fourteen square feet and we are proposing to build a one thousand six hundred and twenty square foot, um, cafe. This slide shows the site as it appears today. It's vacant. Um, the site needs to be occupied by an office that was an office building that was demolished in two thousand seventeen, that is part of the Bristol corridor plan. In November of two thousand twenty two, the applicant submitted a development logic review application for what the post can feel with the drive-through window service and the reduced ten foot setback that was seen complete in February thirteenth of two thousand twenty four. And our people, in two thousand twenty four, the planning commission found a boundary twenty twenty three last zero three to be consistent with the general plan and to allow a three hundred and ninety-two square foot lot to be abandoned by the city. So through the development logic review, uh, public works would work with the applicant to uh, make this three hundred and ninety-two square foot part of the, um, part of the lot that belongs to the applicant. And it allows for, to allow for the construction of the drive-through. On October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, city council approved the street development map for three hundred and ninety-two square foot lot to become part of the applicant site. The applicant proposes to construct a one thousand six hundred and twenty square foot lot, sorry, uh, square foot building with three hundred and seventy square foot of outdoor pantry. Uh, the work includes two hundred and eighty-three lumina foot drive-through um, and, uh, four thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight square foot of drought tolerant landscape. And as I mentioned, a reduced ten foot setback. The caf, the cafe will accommodate approximately thirty patrons and it will open from five AM to ten PM daily. At December's now, uh, after hours proposed. This slide shows the site plan that illustrates the building located to the north of the property and the drive-through lane wrapping around the site to meet the minimum stacking requirements. The slide shows a floor plan which illustrates the walk-in cooler, kitchen, production coffee bar, sitting area, and the drive-through window area. This slide illustrates the landscape plan that shows, um, the different trees that will be planted and, uh, the drought tolerant landscape. These are the proposed renderings for the project. So, um, the top two images would be looking from seven, I'm sorry, Bristol Street to the east. And then, uh, the northwest elevation is also from Seventeenth Street, but at a north angle. And then the northeast elevation is would be the rear of the building. The proposed project will transform a vacant lot into a enviable and visually appealing space, improving both safety and appearance by bringing in commercial business. The proposed drive-through window service is designed to and intended to generate the least amount of impacts to the residential neighborhood located to the east. The drive-through operation is also designed to generate. The drive-through operation is also designed to generate minimal impacts as the speakers are located facing a roof from adjacent residential properties. Also, the drive-through lane exceeds some stacking requirements, which will help avoid traffic impacts. The circumstances associated with the subject site, particularly the size approximately to residential on the east side, present challenges to the overall site design. The reduction at the front door's landscape setback enables the vehicles, sorry, enables the project to be designed to ensure self circulation for all types of vehicles and maximum ability parking. The better reduce front door setback impacts would include reduction in drive aisles and booths, creation of onsite circulation hazards, and the location of the drive-through for speakers closer to the, closer to the neighboring residences. The applicant conducted a focused traffic analysis that analyzed trafficking conditions for three existing Better Bus locations in San Diego. And it also analyzed existing traffic conditions along Bristol Street, close to the project site, and along Bristol and Seventeenth Street, at the intersection of Bristol and Seventeen. Based on the analysis, the project is presumed to have less than significant impact on traffic and circulation. The project is consistent with general plan, number designation of general commercial. It's also consisted with several goals in the land use and economic prosperity elements. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and its guidelines, the project does extend from further under section one five three oh three, class three for new construction or conventional smart structures. Based on the analysis, notice of exemption for environmental reading number twenty twenty-two dash one one nine will be filed. There is no, there are no physical impacts associated with this project. And with that, staff is recommending that we adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number twenty twenty-four dash zero three and variance number twenty twenty-four dash zero one as condition. And I'm available for questions? Thank you. Does the Commissioner have any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Benninger?
Yes, I'm very excited and happy to see something here in that vacant lot number one. A couple of signs that I do have, I want to commend the company from the neighbors and take in their, their questions. I'm kind of concerned how high the wall is on the back to those, to those residents and could it be used a couple of feet, usually high official ivy or something? I know there's no questions for the applicant, but should that was made to be by lights?
Yes, the wall is proposed to be, I believe, about eight feet. And we are also conditioning the project to plant landscape to improve privacy for that residential, the residential properties along the east.
Got you. And then why is that our traffic department to see to agree with the South fiscal and San Diego results?
Yes, we do have members of our Public Works Agency Traffic, the Traffic Division specifically, and they are available for questions, but they did review the traffic, the focused traffic analysis.
I can see this looking very busy and I couldn't get it out. I'm also concerned with college right across the street and how you're keeping a college student from cutting cross and causing the traffic and possibly getting hit. I don't know how to tackle that one, but that's one concern that I have on it. So do we have something for traffic interest there?
And Commissioner, so we'll be casting some more with the traffic in the division that's seen as it relates to the traffic impact analysis report. Although it wasn't required, we want to take a more conservative approach and make sure that we will review this project for any potential impacts. Based on the report, we agree with the findings that there are no significant impacts as it relates to the, to the project. On the comment of the potential pedestrian crossings, you know, we do have a median, we do have buffer bike lanes that also provide other mediums, we have signage in the area. The good thing is that this location is nearby the intersection of Seventeen, where that does have a a crosswalk, a sign rise intersection. So ideally, that's where they're going to be crossing. If we do see in the future that kind of activity, we could always coordinate with the police department to try to do some education and enforcement in the area. But at this point, we don't see any concerns with that.
All right, I'm finishing my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Fan?
Good chat. Is it the McDonald's that's directly below the?
Straightly to the, yeah.
Did McDonald's also have a ten foot reduction in landscaping?
Maybe not, but the site is longer, which allows for a longer drive-through.
And then just a general question, do we coordinate or is it per property owners preference landscaping that is abutting the public right of way to keep the landscaping consistent in terms of, you know, for the tree type of trees?
No, that's the part that's, whether property is up, is up to the property owner. We try to encourage consistency, but we also understand drought.
Right. Thank you.
Commissioner.
What was the former office that was there? Was it a dentist's office or?
I don't believe it was a dentist.
So it's not the old, you know, demure karate studio, right?
I don't believe so.
Because that was, that was the McDonald's. Yeah, okay. Because I thought there's an opportunity to kind of dedicate or something there, signage. But but anyway, I asked you the question about the traffic thing, and thank you, answer answered. The buses stationed to get off there, to take the red light or green, walk on a green light whenever, when I drive by there, that's what I noticed. Is that what the report is revealing? People basically are using the crosswalks and to get to the college. So it's not the college that's running across there.
That's correct. At this point, we have not received any or know or have any knowledge of any illegal pedestrian crossings in the area. So as of now, everybody seems to be using traffic signal asset.
My other question, what's the ingress and egress through the driving that to study meister, your satisfaction that will not interfere with traffic flow and and cause accidents and all that? Because you have all those other places down, down the block too, right?
Yeah, of course. So this site plan actually went through many designs, and we believe this is the best design and it's stacking requirements. And it's safe enough to accommodate for trash pickup. And it's safe for, for cars to back in and out when they park in there.
I just want the rest of the commission here that. Number, number three, the patio, is that going to be covered?
I believe there's going to be, there's not going to be a permanent structure. The applicant can always come back and go through that process. But at this point, it doesn't look like there's going to be a permanent structure to cover the patio. It looks like it's just sitting.
And and there is landscaping with some trees there, right? Okay, I'm just thinking with the college and the businesses, there's a lot of heat there without, you know, being kind of displaced.
Of course. They will have some trees, and it looks like the renderings also showed some shade. Doesn't, I don't know that it's permanent at this point, but a for the applicant to consider.
And and in the discussion with the applicant, is there a, a peak and low period in term of people obtaining coffee? And that was considered in term of the traffic and window usage?
That's correct. The traffic study didn't look at the peaks and even with the largest peak hour and based on comparison with the other businesses in place, the project was expected to have a peak volume of nine vehicles at a time during the, in the drive-through, and it has a capacity of sixteen.
And with the forty seat, is there enough area to hold meetings in there or?
And I don't, I'm not sure. I think the, that would be building code, but I don't think that, that the purpose is to have meetings at this point. I think it's just for.
The neighborhood people want to use it and meet there or to discuss thing is able to at least commentate table for her.
It was a, it was a, for thirty customers at the time, could accommodate a small group, but we want to sit there for coffee and discussions.
That, that's what I thought. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner.
No questions.
Vice Chair Romans?
Yes, I have a few questions. So this vacant property was this, it seems like it was a remnant parcel from the, no, the Bristol riding park? Yeah, so portionally along Bristol Street, there is three hundred and ninety-two square feet that was remnant from Bristol Street winding project. And that piece, those three hundred and ninety-two square feet were city property until it was abandoned, correct?
Correct.
And I know the sizing isn't, wasn't huge, but was that also in compliance with the surplus land act?
Yes.
Okay, cool. And then I know that, I believe it was at some point earlier this year, we, the commission approved another eatery on the same block, maybe closer to Washington and Bristol, and at that time, there were some neighborhood concerns around, I believe, noise and potential like ways and maybe convening of people in the parking lot areas. So were those same concerns considered when developing this C U P?
I think because the people who visit this type of place, the audience is a little different than the other one. I don't think those concerns were raised by the neighborhood in this case.
Yeah, and in addition with Fernando's answer, I can share that the other eatery that's being referenced was a Raising Canes eating establishment, which has a much different peak hour. It's mostly lunch and dinner crowd, and they had initially requested for opening until three o'clock in the morning. Staff had worked with them to have hours that are consistent with In-N-Out McDonald's closer to one A M, only on select nights. But because this is a proposed, proposed coffee house, which as many coffee drinkers would attest, have different peak hours, there was no request for after-hours operation. So the hours, we did evaluate that, but again, it's a different business type. But even if this building were to transition from a coffee house to an eating establishment that served dinner and lunch, staff still did look at it from multiple perspectives to make sure that in its design, whether it's a breakfast, you know, crowd, or whether it's lunch and dinner, it would still be the least impactful. In addition, the Raising Canes, there was concern from the commission about the height of the block wall at the rear. And staff clarified that the standard Bristol plan calls for an eight-foot block wall on all stretches with the understanding that the city very gently slopes from north to south. So some segments, it's like seven foot five, and in other segments, it's eight foot.
Thank you for the clarification. And then one more question on landscaping. Did staff provide recommendations to the applicant on what type of trees they should be considering?
We really don't provide recommendations. We encourage them to stay consistent. But I, what I didn't, staff didn't give like a sample of trees?
Okay, so I, thank you. So I know in the past, this commission typically championed by Commissioner Scamia, who's not here tonight, recommends that we, I believe, add a condition to the C U P that requires that the applicant pick tree species that have been identified by Public Works as trees that provide greater shade and that will just be better for sitting in the long run. So I would like to, one, if the applicant is present, ask if they're amicable with that, and then also include that as a condition of the C U P. That's all for me as of now. Thank you.
No questions were answered as everyone else asked questions. So thank you. The public hearing is now open with the applicant?
I'd just like to second what Commissioner Romans has said. I sat in this room, part of E-Tech, and we went through and worked very hard to come up with a tree approval list. So that's easily available. We should be supplying that.
Thank you. Thank you. The public hearing is now open with the applicant would just speak on the under. So then everybody can, can you just, for the recording? Thank you.
Okay. I'm not the best speaker, so bear with me. My name is Amir Horianni. I've been working with the planning team on this project. And our tenant, Better Bus Coffee. So when we first started on this project, we wanted to kind of take a parcel of land that was challenged, you know, due to the Bristol Street widening that reduced these, that, you know, the depth of property. This was a little bit of a challenging property to work on, but we went through a lot of iterations with staff, with my tenant, and also with the neighborhood, neighborhood group, who are very pleasant to me. They're very kind people. You know, we wanted to build something that's going to last for the city and something that is designed to kind of benefit local connections and not create issues, right? So like the block wall, we, we're doing eight-foot sound absorbing block, block wall. Of course, sorry. Like we're doing eight-foot sound absorbing block wall along the entire east portion of the wall. And then between the block wall and our drive-through queue, we have a landscaping that's designed to grow and create further absorption of any potential noise. You know, the main boards, we purposely pointed them away from the houses, and we brought them as close as we could to Bristol Street to want to be cognitive of sound. You know, the light fixtures in the parking lot, they're all facing towards the property. We installed like, uh, light shields behind the light fixtures so that it doesn't spill into the residences. You know, we negotiated with our tenant so that all investment of money into the actual building. So the, if you look at the design, it's not cheap. What's being proposed, there are definitely certain, there are definitely cheaper options to go with. We felt like this would help create more of a positive direction for other future developments to copy over time. You know, we've, we've built the senior before, we did these Starbucks at twenty-seven Olin North Grand, back when Mr. Pedishore was a senior planner, and he was the first person I met in the city. And, you know, if you ever see that project, you'll see like adding a busting to get really good, you know, because beautiful as we could. And we're doing the same thing here with the Better Bus, and we want to keep, you know, doing this over time. So just, that's kind of our background. Okay, answer any questions you have, and it's most of my ability.
Thank you. So yes, the question I have is, would you be amicable to ensuring that the trees included in the landscaping plan are part of the city's approved or recommended list that Public Works and the E-Tech Commission created? So essentially, trees that will provide shading and that will are part of what the city, the city staff has identified as the better trees for us to have. And it's a list.
It's a list. So I always want to answer a yes. Are these, do any of these trees create major visibility impairments for the building? Because I don't know what the trees are.
I, I can answer that. A lot of the work we did was make sure the roots don't cause pavements to rise and drivers to be broken up with it. So I think the question you're asking is that, yes, that's been considered a lot of trees that they recommend. And we have almost like twenty-five trees. It's not just one tree. There's also a drought tolerant too.
Yes, that's fine.
I have a little one. Okay. I will bring it back. Recording secretary, we received any written communication? There was a reminder of the public that we need to comment on this item. We have not received public comment prior to three thirty P M deadline. If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on this item, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into a sec, turn it into a secretary. If you are participating, we assume if we'd like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon and unmute yourself. If you are calling in and would like to comment on this item, please dial nine and then six to unmute yourself. Chair, we do have, we do have a speaker that's.
Chair, would you have, would you have a speaker? That's. We'll call you.
Hi, thank you, Commissioners. Um appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Nina Jeric. I'm co-president of the Washington Square Neighborhood Association. Uh little over a year ago, um we were contacted through our city liaison um through a mirror. And he asked to have a meeting with the neighborhood because he wanted to present to us what was being proposed uh by by his client, uh Better Buzz Coffee, and uh wanted to know what we thought of the idea. Um as you know, our Washington Square Neighborhood is between Seventeenth Street and Civic Center. And we've got Bristol right there. And on the other side of Donald's and couple of vacant lots um is residential housing. Uh the block wall has always been somewhat of a challenge. Uh when we were contacted about having uh another, having a business going to that vacant lot, we were very excited. Especially one that wasn't a large chain organization. Uh but of course, our concerns were number one. Can we get the block rail higher? Number two, how is that going to impact the residents, the noise level? What are the hours of operation? Will there be enough landscaping? What will the lighting be like, the noise? Um so all of these things were were readily addressed. Uh we in fact had two meetings with many of the neighbors that actually live right there on Louis Street, which is directly east of the proposed property. Um and what they had done based on our recommendations, uh the second design that they came back with um addressed all of these concerns. It addressed landscaping. And as you've already heard, it addressed the lighting, um the stacking order. Um I don't know that we specifically addressed it, but we were concerned about how things would back up on Bristol. And um they had redesigned slightly, if I'm not mistaken, the the stacking order which the cars would be going through. Um also, our concerns regarding the the speakers for the drive-through and what are the hours of operation? And bottom line is, as a representative from Washington Square Neighborhood Association, we are very much in favor of Better Buzz Coffee going in there. They've addressed our concerns. We welcome them as a neighbor. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is the commission have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Beninter?
Uh firstly, thank you for the reading. What can we have a host to sometimes returns and afterthought? So uh as the president of common, I can very much appreciate you considering the neighborhoods, then number one. Number two, would you consider putting uh false ivy in along that back wall and raise it by two feet?
Like fake ivy?
Oh yeah, there's a lot of nice false ivy that's built through line wire and she see around several occasions and just would uh go in that back wall and would cup raise that well by two feet.
So are we, are we using the false ivy to raise the height of the wall?
Correct. You know, knock down any visual noise and lights getting getting in that backyard. Would you consider it?
I would hundred percent consider it. I just, I need to talk to my landscape architect and see.
Yeah, I don't know why I'm asking false eyes, but it is one of the concern I've heard from the neighborhood over there. So you can look into it and we appreciate, of course.
Just for clarification for staff, is that um allowed to exceed? Well, it was the current proposed wall at the maximum height. Um now with the recommendation of the question, the commissioner, the you know, max allowed height, sorry, the max allowed height is ten feet. Okay. So commissioners requesting it to go up to uh ten feet. Okay.
If I could just add, um so increasing its height from eight to ten, even with false ivy would probably require um engineered calculations to be submitted just to make sure it's not increasing the weight load of the wall. So it's feasible, just an extra step the applicant would have to undertake. And then secondly, with false ivy, um I would recommend if the applicant does agree to move forward with the the condition being uh inclusive of verbiage that requires that if it's faded or tattered or like peeling off the wall, it would be routinely replaced to maintain the aesthetic and not become, you know, visual light for the community. So just some considerations for the commission.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Beninter?
Yeah, I'm 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 going to the um condition of the verbiage. I would also suggest that uh within that condition, the applicant um should engage with the two direct uh neighbors uh opposite of that wall to see verifying whether or not they would uh like that additional two feet. Just because, um yes, it does create a barrier, but it also creates a visual barrier on the other side as well to the neighbor. So I, I'm sure verbiage, just to confirm with the the other parties that are sharing that property line.
So what I could commit to is we'll look into the intricacies of doing it, raising like two feet with false ivy. I've never done it, so it's hard for me to commit to it. We will, and if we will move forward with that, we'll coordinate with the neighbors first to make sure that this is something that they will be okay, like open with, okay with. Is that fair? Okay.
Commissioner?
Um I just noticed, and this question to staff, that there's one bathroom for both the employee and customers, right? So it's a unisex bathroom, but there's only one for people who are drinking coffee.
That is correct. And I think that was just based on um building code requirements.
So it needs the code to provide one bathroom, so you're not asking for additional.
Correct.
Okay. Is there room for one or? I'm not proposing it, but I'm just curious.
I mean, if the applicant would want to add one, um there is sufficient room.
And generally, the 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 operation of a coffee house, people drink, have a sip, or they they go out, right? So they don't hang in there unless they conduct a business in there or meeting some friends, right?
So the vast majority of customers going to a cafe are in and out very quickly. And small portion of the customers actually stay for a long time. You know, within, within the building walls, you know, we've allowed better bus to kind of dictate how everything lays out inside the building because it's their operation. And they know that, I know how to build. You know, they know how to operate a cafe. So I can always give the suggestion that, hey, you propose one restroom, do you want to consider doing a second one? Um but ultimately, I try to be respectful of how people operate, come what they're good at.
I'm just thinking with um the bus stops there, you're riding along, you're getting to that corner and grab a cup of coffee and right, you know, the bathroom might be locked up. But anyway, that that's just a curiosity. I don't want to add any more burden on the business.
Any questions? I I guess my question is, the McDonald's wall is eight feet?
Correct.
And the consistency down Bristol should be consistent. So while I appreciate you your consideration of raising the wall, I do have some concerns if we're not consistent down Bristol. Um in addition to that, if the neighbors wanted a higher wall, they could have raised, they could have, they could have put a wall higher themselves on their side. So I'm uh I'm concerned about the addition of ask of you doing more. But if you're willing to entertain it, that's fine. But I have some concerns about consistency down Bristol. That's fair.
Most challenges. I have no questions, but I'm ready to make a motion if there are additional comments or questions. Any additional comments or questions? So I'd like to um move to go with staff's recommendation. So. Yes, I would like to um move with staff's recommendation with the addition of a condition that um the applicant will pick trees from, I don't know what the formal names is, but from the city's list of approved trees.
Second.
Is that Commissioner Liu?
Yeah.
Yes, uh a second, Commissioner Liu, Secretary, this is called for. Commissioner Beninter?
Hi.
Commissioner Scamia? Commissioner Liu?
Hi.
Commissioner Fan?
Hi.
Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
Vice Chair Ramos?
Hi.
Chair Luda?
Hi.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioners Scamia absent. We can close the public hearing. We just have comments.
Okay, Chair. Just want to quickly be conscious up to date on some um this past Thursday, staff attended an O C A P A, which is the Orange County section of the American Planning Association, to receive a recognition award of excellence for the work that the city did um with the components of general plan update that was led by the planning and building agency. It won an award for a large jurisdiction within the components of uh plan. And the recognition is not only for the work that was done with the community engagement, but also the core values that has been espoused within the plan itself, including education, equity. Um uh as well as sustainability and a few more. But I think what it goes to is it recognizes the um not only how our community um engage our residents, but how the voice resident has been reflected in the final document itself. Uh in addition to that, for the end of September, we attended a C A L A P A, which is the larger agency, uh the California chapter of the American Planning Association, also receiving an award for the general plan update itself. Uh in addition to that, our staff were the um hosts of two separate workshop where we were the expert panelists discussing uh our work with enforcement in cannabis industry as well as the work that we do with the environmental justice program that we have here at the city. So just want to give a quick shout out to our uh planning staff. Um who we have as part of the city, I do, I I have I've seen in the last six years where the bus planning staff I've worked with. So we should be very proud of the work that we do. And um we have two um showcase, I guess, of of awards and we're getting ready for the third one. So. Congratulations. That's all I have. I leave. Do you have anything?
Thank you. Or else I could talk to them, but more technically, at the prior meeting, there was a request for information on A D U production uh in the city. I do want to show that the detailed information that's being sought is in the city's annual housing element progress report and general plan progress report that is filed with the city council and the state every year. The last time we did it was in, it's April of every year. So we'll go ahead and follow up. I just want to give this mobile update and follow up with an email to the commission with a link to that report and the specific page numbers that you can look at. Um it's pretty detailed by income category and all that. Um and pretty easy to read document as well, very visual. So that's it.
Thank you. Is the commission having any comments or questions for staff?
Thank you. Uh to answer Commissioner Ramos's uh question, focus call the full transition setting on recently. On it, I would recommend staff to um talk to Public Works and get a copy for each one of the commissioners. To bring these real color pictures and strive to trees and allow us to have them. Two, I want to thank staff for the presentation to 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 the last, we get the transism. Um I also recommend all the commissioners listen to me, listen to my presentation. It's very nicely done. And the more groups, I hope you did a great job during that meeting. And it gives a good feel for the neighborhood and the concerns are out there. Um we should have a very good Halloween, good good time. I see Melissa now has joined us. She got her new tag and else engineer, we think of strange things, I kind of letters and you have eighteen letters, you got an alias. So congratulations. Thank you.
Commissioner Beninter?
No comments, but congratulations. I, you know, I see all the publications uh of projects are featured in uh San Ana and even though we're not directly involved, it's kind of proud to see, you know, innovative projects in the city being uh presented and being features. It's it's good. Congratulations.
Uh I'm concerned with the aging house and stock that we have, uh particularly those that were uh quickly built post-war war to in the nineteen fifties. Um what's happening is that insurance companies are canceling uh coverage due to the age of the plumbing and electrical, uh which for safety reasons need to, but if it's too cold, uh they want them to repipe and redo their electricity. Uh for those uh residents in in those community, because uh I thought I was alone in having that issue, but then at at a neighborhood meeting and talking to people in the supermarket, I find that it's becoming systemic. Uh so I I know that there's a lot of um different um home improvement programs, um neighborhood works and other groups. Um and um the habitat and humanity refers us back to the city, you know, a home rehabilitation program. But there are income um uh generally and and sometime your income is a little higher, even though you're a senior and all that. So um I I you know, um I just wish there was, you know, some other alternative to that, ma- maybe some sensitivity in helping people fill out these forms and 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 uh you know, uh but but anyway, I found out the um the desks out there and the people that met uh that 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 service state committee have been very helpful, cordial and and very polite and and helpful. So um we got good staff there.
Commissioner?
Um couple of things. Um since we approved the um Bristol related project, if you keep track of housing, Irvine's willing to do sixteen thousand units in and around the airport. Imagine sixteen thousand units in and around the airport. If Jamboree is not already close to an F in traffic at certain times of the day, it will be an F. But I just want to let the public know that things are going up around us. Right? Costa Mesa is looking at doing more affordable housing. So finally, other people are starting to do what we took the leadership role on. And I think that's a good thing. Second of all, I had a question, and you guys don't have to answer it today, but the school district has declining pupil population. They have large land sites at some of these schools. And I don't know if they're thinking about condensing or closing the school. But that is ripe for housing and it's allowed by state law. And I'm wondering, do we get a say in it? Or do, or does the school district do it on its own? Because I think of these schools that are in neighborhoods, right? And you think about, it should be consistent with the neighborhood housing that's in the the stock that's in the neighborhood, wherever school it is. And so as we go down this road, because the states made it known that they want more housing built, um al- along the churches for that matter. But I I think about the school district with declining population and is there a way, do we have a say or does the school district do it all? Uh I I I'm just wondering, as we go down this road, um um to figure out how we can add more housing.
Well, certainly we can get more detailed information about the process by which a school closes uh all of the schools dispose of the property, but um under state law, they are required to um offers to agency for producing housing as as a first opportunity. So once they have done that, and and this is the world where as part of city law, we have to look into it, but we do have zoning control over the property. Um and as long as it's for a housing purpose under the state law, I think it would be consistent. We can certainly get my information for you and get back to you.
Is that the same process for state building? Cause you know, you read in the paper that the D M V in South Orange County closed. Would that occur if the D M V were to close in? That that would, does does that be, it's offered up agency first? Does the state declare surplus land? How how did it work?
Followed that same process uh of the Surplus Land Act. So it would have to be off of first floor housing.
Commissioner? Yes, I have a few comments for us. Uh, congratulations. Well, thank you for tonight and congratulations staff on the recognition and all the other planning stuff that we don't see on the daily basis, but are working very hard. Um, also, thank you for the meeting, uh, at the train station last week. So I was there and I want to give a shout out to Maravita Masolonia, who did an amazing job, um, showing up very well with the uh, very, um, passionate crowd. Uh, so she did a great job. So I think she deserves a lot of recognition for that. And I also just wanted to let the public know that, uh, this weekend, there are going to be a lot of events in San Ana, specifically in downtown San Ana, celebrating the Los Muertos. So there's the twenty-plus year Noche de Altares that happens beginning on Ross Street. I believe going towards, uh, Broadway or Main, uh, on fourth. There's also Viva La Vida and it's also, um, first weekend. So the, uh, rock will be happening. And then we're also a week and a day away from our election. So I hope that everybody will turn out and vote. Um, very important in many ways. There's a national election, but our local election also matters. So I ask all of you to turn out and vote. Thank you. I want to congratulate staff. It's, it's how, um, Commissioner Fan said it's gives you pride to have like an award-winning planning team. So congratulations. I have no further comments. Um, the next program meeting is scheduled for November twenty-third, twenty-four at five thirty PM. Thanks for joining us guys.